Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, February the sixth, twenty twenty-four. We welcome you here this evening. And I'm glad it's been a little warmer the last few days, make everybody feel better, for sure on that. In a few minutes, we'll be going to a moment of silence, and then we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to our country. Before we do that, we have a quick announcement or two. First, we want to wish a happy birthday to our council member, Mr. Ralph Presswood. Today is his twenty-ninth birthday. Twenty-nine times a couple, anyway.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus. But happy birthday, Ralph.
Thank you.
Glad you're here with us on your birthday, for sure. And also, as we go to our time of moment of silence, please keep the family of Mr. Wayne Keller in your thoughts and prayers. Wayne was with Blue Ridge Electric for many, many years, quite a fine gentleman in our city, did a lot of things for our city and county for over the years, and well-respected in his community, and will be one of those that'll be missed. A real pioneer and legend in our community. So keep the family of Wayne Keller in your thoughts and prayers. All right, if you will, please join us for our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge.
Thank you.
We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Tonight, our first order of business is a presentation from our DLR group. And they, tonight, will present a review of our downtown master plan to the council. They have been working on this now for some months. With us, and we have Andrew Gale with us tonight. Andrew, thank you for being here. Oh, and Caroline Thompson, also of the DLR group, is on Zoom with us tonight. So, great work, and we appreciate all the trips that you have made to Lenore. And we've had a lot of meetings with not only the council and players that are involved, but citizens in our community, and a lot of input. And we're ready now to implement this and put it, get it going. So, Andrew, glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbons. Let me make sure this all works. So, we're gonna do a very brief overview. I think the master plan document has been distributed to council, and you guys have all had a chance to review it. And I think comments are welcome here or to filter back through Kalen. So, you know, I wanted to highlight a couple of the things that we understood when we were starting this process. You know, we had a list of goals that we were trying to achieve. I think the ones that I really wanted to highlight for this group here, you know, we understood that we're trying to stitch together a lot of, you know, threads that have been sort of, you know, been implemented or been talked about or been sort of planned for Lenore and downtown Lenore over, you know, some number of years. So, to take all of those and kind of weave those threads into a cohesive sort of fabric of a downtown. It was important to us and to the community, I think, that this was an achievable goal. You know, it's not a goal that sits, or it's not a plan that sits on a shelf. It's something that really becomes sort of a guiding document for the town of Lenore. And I think also, you know, in broad strokes, you know, we know that North Carolina is growing. You know, we know that western North Carolina is growing, Caldwell County is growing, Lenore is growing. We want the growth to happen. You know, we want Lenore to be able to capture that growth, capture the dynamism that we know is gonna be growing, you know, in North Carolina. So, a downtown that's vital, that's exciting, that's bringing people is really important. So, you know, as Mayor Gibbons said, we did a lot of outreach to the community. We did a lot of events where we, you know, workshops where we invited the community to come and talk to us about what was important to them in their downtown. You know, we really wanted this to be a plan that was based in the community needs and desires. You know, we interviewed city staff, we interviewed council members, we interviewed community leaders, church leaders, to really try to get a good picture. I think the thing that I really wanted to highlight here is sort of the survey responses that we got. You know, that to us were really indicative of a lot of appetite in the community for a really vital downtown. And I think, you know, that gave us a lot of confidence, and I think it should give you guys confidence too, to say, you know, implementation will be hard, but the community wants it. I mean, you know, eight hundred responses to a survey is phenomenal. It really is, and I think it speaks a lot to, you know, the energy within Lenore. So, I'll go through some of this really quick, and I know that probably this is legible, so I'll try to interpret it, but... You know, within the opportunities that we see, you know, there's things that are outside of Lenore that need to come into Lenore. The OVT is a great example of one of those things. You know, tourism from, you know, other parts of North Carolina and the region, you know, to the mountains, to Lenore, to this region, you know, something that's important to capture. But also, I think the opportunities, again, to make this, the downtown of Lenore, a place for the community of Lenore. It's not just for tourists, right? It's for the community, and we heard that over and over again. You know, again, there's an underlying demand for growth. We heard that. We see that as an opportunity. And we see as an opportunity, you know, a real desire within the community for more open space, for more connection to the neighborhoods, for more family activities, you know, like, why do you come to downtown if you don't work and you don't want to go to a restaurant? Like, what are you doing? So, we see that as a real opportunity. And again, you know, within that growth is the opportunity for housing. We heard that a lot, you know, from when we were talking to community leaders on the advisory committee and elsewhere. You know, they want to hire, they need to attract people. You know, where are those people gonna live? That was important to them. So, we had some principles. You know, I'm not gonna read the slide. I think it's important to understand that we tried to go sort of in a methodical way and build up and say, you know, we understand that at a certain point, a master plan needs to get into sort of the tactical implementation. You know, where do stoplights go? Where do traffic lights go? But there needs to be some guiding principles as well, because there is no such thing as, you know, a perfect plan that stays perfect for ten years. You know, things change, the facts on the ground change. And so, you know, understanding that there needs to be a why beyond all of this stuff is important. And again, that's all in the master plan. The pieces that I think, you know, I want to highlight here, you know, within these buckets of programming, connectivity, mixed uses, placemaking, you know, is really this notion of policy and capacity, right? You know, as this growth happens, you know, staff has to grow, infrastructure has to grow to sort of accommodate those things. And so, all of this stuff has to happen, you know, in sort of a strategic and planned way. So, I'm gonna move fairly quickly into recommendations. So, again, within our recommendations, we kind of have these four big frameworks. One is mixed use, arts, culture, heritage, programming, right? So, what is actually happening downtown? Sort of the next framework is circulation, connectivity, and parking, which is to say, you know, what is the framework that supports all of those programming uses? You know, placemaking, open space in public realm is sort of a third framework. And then again, policy and capacity. So, what do those mean? So, you know, in terms of arts, culture, and heritage programming, we identified, you know, let's say, a few key sites that we think are very catalytic to downtown. And we've highlighted them on this map, you know. The Center Theater is an obvious one. You know, what happens to the Center Theater, I think, has an outsized effect on downtown Lenore. The site of the former Walgreens, which is number four there, you know, as a big open parcel. I understand that there's some plans for what that might be now. But when we started this plan, it was just, it was just space, you know? But you can see by virtue of its location and its, you know, sort of unencumbered-like area, like, there's a real opportunity there. The campus, obviously, the old Lenore High School as an opportunity, also, you know, we really felt like could be really catalytic to downtown. You know, and so, I guess, what does that mean? It means that, you know, there is a certain amount of investment that I think the city wants to make in those spaces, to say, let's encourage development here. And the idea with this master plan is, you know, a little bit of investment and a couple of spots can spread. So, you know, we are showing in our master plan all of these, like, orange buildings here. You know, those are all sort of envisioned as mixed-use developments, bringing businesses but also residents, you know, into downtown. That's not stuff that the city's doing, other than maybe on a policy level, right? That's stuff that, you know, as you do sort of these catalytic developments focused on arts, heritage, outdoors, you know, the reasons why people want to be in Lenore, you know, all of that other development should follow. You know, obviously, we thought and talked a lot about connectivity, parking. You know, I think the big picture here is, you know, turning one-way streets into two-way streets is gonna be really critical on some timeline. Really looking at the perimeter of a downtown and really sort of enlarge downtown footprint and saying, what are the gateways? Where are people coming in and trying to build, you know, a resonance about what that space is, is really important. You know, the other thing that we talked about a lot with the community, and the community really seemed to get excited about, was this notion of north-south connections. So, Lenore, the downtown area, has really good east-west streets. You know, Harper West, Ash even. But the north-south connections beyond Main Street are not as good. And that does a couple of things. It makes it really hard to be a pedestrian in downtown Lenore. It makes it hard to get around. It makes it harder for you guys to sort of leverage some of your assets, like, all of these parking lots, you know, north at the, along all these churches. You know, that's, those are great opportunities for people who are parking at festivals, you know, to be outside of downtown and then walk in. And a lot of the businesses that we talked to were really excited about this idea of kind of, you know, enforcing these north-south connections, you know, as pedestrian spaces. So, potentially pedestrianizing some roads. But also, looking for places mid-block where you can cut through and create sort of alleys of opportunity for businesses, for outdoor eating, for sort of festival spaces, you know? And create, again, this notion of placemaking for the residents, right? So, it's not necessarily about tourism per se, it's about sort of creating opportunities for local businesses to really inhabit downtown. Yeah, please.
You said that those access was not good. What do you mean?
Right, so you have, I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see the cursor here. So, as an example, here, you know, this block of West is very long, right? Without really good north-south connections. And so, from this corner, and I know you can't see this, but somewhat, to this corner, that's just a long distance. And so, this forms what we kind of call superblocks, right? That are unfriendly to pedestrians and make it hard even for businesses, really, to have, you know, for the traffic to slow down, to see the signs, to see the sales, to see, you know, the people out there, you know, eating, you know, brunch or whatever. You know, our idea is that you need to enforce that street grid and make sort of the blocks smaller in that sort of direction. So, everywhere we're showing these sort of orange lines, you know, that's imagined to be a north-south connection.
I guess my problem is I'm colorblind, so, sorry about that.
Well, look, we go into more detail in the master plan, which again, you will have. But when you're looking at that, that is the goal, right? Is to sort of stitch together the street grid of Lenore in a tighter way that will be better for street traffic, better for visibility, and better for pedestrians. And it's better for street traffic, and this incentive will slow people down. You know, we heard that a lot, that there's a lot of sort of people speeding around and not necessarily seeing where they're going. And the two-way streets also will help with that.
Two-way streets.
So, again, and again, you know, these sort of north-south connections also help with what we would call placemaking. So, those can be, again, if these are streets that are pedestrianized, that becomes open space. It becomes the open space that people are asking for. You know, we're also looking for opportunities, obviously, to create other, you know, public spaces within the downtown. You know, there's J.E. Brighill Park, which has a reputation that I think is not great, and I don't know if that's an earned reputation or not. You know, we've heard different things, but it doesn't matter in a way. I mean, if people don't think it's safe, it doesn't matter if it is in fact or not. I think, you know, looking for ways for downtown to sort of, you know, connect into Brighill Park in a way and kind of take ownership of that is really important. You know, Walker Stadium, similarly. Matt Cook Stadium, similar. So, the goal here really was to say, you know, where are places that we can introduce green space, public space, places for families to come? They can be programmed in different ways. We heard splash pad a thousand times. And whether it's a splash pad or something else, it doesn't really matter, but you're creating spaces for families. So, you know, we've identified, you know, the idea that there could be a gateway park that would be a place to stitch into J.E. Brighill, perhaps, but also bring people, you know, from there a little bit closer, and also be a nice sort of green amenity as you come into downtown for three-twenty-one. We looked for opportunities for little pocket parks within sort of this downtown Main Street core. Again, these could be tiny things. It could be, you know, no bigger than three parking spaces put together. But, you know, you put a food truck on it, you put some benches, you put a nice shade tree, and you really start to get something really nice. You know, and then we have a big open space. When we talk about the campus, you know, there's a real opportunity at that end of downtown. There's land that the city owns or has access to. There's amenities that the city owns or has control of. And there's gonna be a lot of growth, we imagine, along that area, you know, as mills get converted to residential uses. You know, there's gonna be a lot of people clamoring for that. So, we'll talk about that in more detail in a minute. You know, and again, you know, just going back to this notion of, like, whatever form we start to give to a downtown policy and capacity, you know, have to be always considered. Like, what is the staff able to accomplish? Who's gonna be doing it, you know? And how do you grow the staff along with that? So, this is sort of our illustrative view, you know, and we've got a board here, so, you know, feel free to examine it in detail. But really, this is just a summary of everything we've already said, right? A lot of these orange buildings that I apologize. I don't, even if you're not colorblind, it's a little subtle at this scale. But, you know, we had some people misinterpret these graphics and say, well, you know, somebody went bulldozed my building. That is not what we're trying to show. We are trying to show that, again, you start with, you know, strategic, you know, points in downtown Lenore that we've identified, and the development will follow, right? So, if somebody's, you know, property suddenly has an orange building on it, it means, you know, a developer came in and paid him a lot of money to buy that piece of land, right? So, that ideally is good for everybody. And again, sort of a 2D version of that. So, I wanted to get into a little bit of detail about, so we broke up the downtown into four areas. You know, the west, which includes the camp, so this is a little bit bigger than your downtown footprint proper. But the west district, north, the core downtown, and then, you know, the Mulberry Street area, you could call it south. You could call it sort of a medical corridor, whatever you want to call it. You know, you'll have to brand all these, right? If it's a useful framework, you want to brand it all. But again, in the west district in particular, you know, we see a lot of opportunity here in this area, you know, north of the band building, on the north side of Harper Avenue, to really create a really beautiful outdoor space that would have a lot of opportunities for programming. You know, farmers markets, if you want them, arts markets, you know, and alternative festival sites, you know, parks for kids, all of those sorts of things. You know, it would solve the drainage issue that you have right now. You could sort of daylight this creek that's been sort of built over and create a really beautiful area, you know, that would also, again, solve some drainage issues. And it gives this band building a reason to be. I mean, you know, I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit more detail here. So, just to orient everybody, you can see the stadium. I don't know where my cursor went. Right, so you can see the Matt Cook Stadium here. This is the gymnasium. This is the theater, the foothills. And then the band building here. And that big metal sort of stripey-green tan building is here where we've got this twelve Harper Avenue. So, again, you know, you can imagine a green space here just north of the band building that does a lot of really great things. Again, it brings amenities into the downtown that residents want. It creates a nice, you know, node of development, you know, where all of the mills are or close to them. So, it's a good bridge to downtown from that area. And, you know, I think the band building, you know, and the campus, you know, if nostalgia was gonna be enough, I'm just gonna say this, I don't know if this is dangerous or not. I think if nostalgia was a reason enough to renovate those spaces, it would have happened, right? So, we think, you know, you want to look at a couple of things. I think nostalgia for an old Lenore High School, you know, is a real thing, and that's important. You know, we think, you know, not treating it as this sort of sacrosanct, you know, temple of a former high school, but saying, like, this has to be a performing building. This has to be a building that generates revenue. You know, that's an important thing to think about. And then third, you know, looking at the bigger picture and saying, you know, right now, this band building is at the back of a Lenore High School where the front of it is senior living and really kind of makes it a difficult space to use. You know, if we open up everything north of that as this park, all of a sudden, you know, this band building is fronting on that thing, and it really has new life as the centerpiece and sort of the terminus of a real public amenity instead of just being at the back of a space, right? And it's also a good, you know, sort of nexus between, you know, a Matt Cook Stadium that really, you know, should be a jewel for downtown. You know, again, in terms of youth sports, you know, we heard that time and again. You know, that's what people want. They want, it's a regulation soccer field in downtown Lenore, like, you know, host tournaments. Everybody who's at the tournament goes downtown to eat, you know, back and forth. There's a lot of synergy right there. So, we're excited about that. We're excited about that for Lenore. And again, there's more details in the master plan. And this is sort of summarizing what we said already. You know, there's a part of that band building that should be used for heritage, heritage tourism, you know? But that can't be the only thing. You know, community uses, like, you know, pub art, art space, tech incubators could be really important, and revenue generating uses. I mean, half the building should be revenue generating, you know, to help pay for everything else. You know, the garage would be a perfect space for a cafe, for instance. So, the north district, again, I think the important thing for us to say is, you know, we see a lot of opportunity, you know, with all of those churches, with all of that parking, you know, leveraging that parking as a way to, you know, serve downtown when you have, you know, sort of this surge demand around festivals. But creating those opportunities for people to sort of percolate through the blocks and get to downtown proper is sort of key to unlocking all of that. You know, downtown, we see, you know, there's so many good things happening in the core downtown. You know, so many things that have already been started. I think you're just continuing those. I mean, you know, you know, continuing your storefront program, continuing, you know, trying to activate second floors for residential is a great, great opportunity. You know, making those two-way streets will really help quite a bit. And again, sort of those pocket parks where you can introduce any kind of green space within that core would be really valuable. You know, in the south district too, we see a lot of opportunity. I mean, there's a lot of development that we already know is happening down there, driven by, you know, the hospital, that you really want to capture. You know, so we have some detail there. And I should also say, along the way, I mean, again, you know, we know things change. So, you know, if you are applying, how am I doing? Am I in time? So, as you, as you, as you sort of apply some of the framework for this master plan, you know, as sort of the facts on the ground change, you can use the framework as guidelines, right? So, as an example for the courthouse, right? You know, if the courthouse stays where it is and expands, you know, we know, you know, from our analysis of the master plan, that these north-south connections, you know, are really important to Lenore. So, the courthouse, as it expands, may want to try to close a north-south street, you know, as they expand to use as an alley port or whatever. You know, we think that that could do a lot of harm, right? So, when you're looking at a courthouse expansion that's going in its current site, you know, trying to maintain as many of those north-south connections for pedestrians, for people, you know, outside of just the courthouse is gonna be really critical. You know, similarly, you know, if it's going in sort of this site here at the old Walgreens, you know, on that block, you know, that's a really critical site. I mean, you know, it's a culmination of the entrance to downtown from three-twenty-one. It's also the end of this axis coming up Mulberry Street from the hospital. You know, so you've got a lot of people coming in. It's a really visible spot, you know? So, and again, in addition to, you know, sort of the streetscape connection, this notion of gateways into downtown, you know, and visibility, and creating a downtown that's suitable for pedestrians, I think, you know, like, a fortress there would be a real problem, I think, for downtown Lenore, right? So, as much as you can, you know, work with the county to make a courthouse in that location open and inviting and a great gateway and an advertisement to Lenore would be really critical. You know, so again, you have a framework here within this downtown to really look at what, you know, as facts change, you know, what are the guiding principles that you're trying to build towards? You know, we have in the master plan some case studies of cities, you know, within the region and outside the region that are similar to Lenore, that have implemented some of the things that we've talked about in this master plan, so you can use those as a guideline as well. And we've given you some ideas about phasing. You know, you can't do everything at once, you know? So, what are the things that you can do, you know, today or tomorrow? And what are the things that you're gonna be looking at doing ten years from now? So, again, I don't want to go through all of that detail, but you can read it, you know, in the master plan. And then we talked a little bit about funding strategies. I think, you know, what I think we heard, you know, and you guys probably have a better pulse of this, is that nobody's expecting things for free, but they want value. And so, you know, understanding where the funding is gonna come from and what it's going towards and what is the most important things, you know, I'm sure is gonna be critical as you move forward. So, I talked a lot. And again, I apologize that it's all a little bit small, but again, you can look at it in detail now that I've given you sort of a framework, you know, within the master plan. I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
It's a lot to take in.
Yes. We've been trying to do that. We've had it for, you know, a while to look at, and obviously, we've been reading over it, looking into the whole thing, but it's still hard to take all that in and be ready to ask certain questions about it.
Well, like I said, I mean, you know, we're not going away. So, by all means, I think, you know, Kalen and Matthew are a great resource. You know, I would say, you know, Kalen and Matthew are a great resource to Lenore. They've been really helpful to us in sort of mobilizing, and they've done a lot of work. And I imagine it's sort of over and above. So, I think it's worth saying thank you to them, and thank you, Mayor Gibbons. I know you've been a real champion of this effort. It's been, you know, really, really great to work with you and the city.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll keep digesting, and we'll be back with more.
Absolutely.
That's right. We gotta digest it.
We got more time on it.
All right. We will then move on to, we don't have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening. So, we'll move to our consent agenda items. So we'll move to our consent agenda items, consisting of the minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, January sixteenth. Twenty twenty-four, item B or the minutes.
Goodbye.
Thank you. Close session. This is a close session minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, January sixteenth. And these were reviewed by the city council, the city manager and the city attorney. Item C is a bid award. This is for the old Lenore High School, which is at the campus. Roof replacement project. This is a recommendation. We award a low bid of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. To Barger Ash Roofing as the lowest responsible bidder for the old Lenore High School roof replacement project. And that is which we've. Band building in the gym, that's right, on that. That's item C. And item D is a resolution. This is for a BRIC grant. It's a this is a recommendation approval. By resolution to designate agents to seek funding for the BRIC grant for the city of Lenore. Resilient wastewater treatment infrastructure project. This designation is part of the application process. There is a note, additional background information is available on the council action form included in the agenda packet. So that's your items A through D. I will open it up to the council for any discussion and or motion when you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Thomas to approve the consent agenda items A through D as we have in front of you. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to a time on our agenda for requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address. The council concerning any issue, now is the time to do so. Yes, sir. Come forward, if you will, come to the podium and you'll give us your name and address. We appreciate it.
Sorry about that. My name is Patrick Haristy. I'm with His Glory Search Rescue in eighteen. I wanted to come to y'all and ask y'all, what's your plans to help the homeless instead of keep pushing them out? It seems like we're pushing them out of the community instead of trying to solve a problem of homelessness. What's our resolution for that?
Well, there's a lot of things that are going on. I don't know how much you followed of all that, but we've had some warming shelters that have been.
That's operating illegally, open below thirty-two degrees, is that correct?
No.
No, it's not.
Yeah, they have been open and they've been running twenty-four hours a day. Is that not correct?
I have no idea.
It's not for us.
Everything that's been that we have had anything to do, our staff, fire and police have all been been there and the county, obviously.
Primarily county, yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Alice Houston. Well, downtown, right here, James Wilfond, I've been there, you know, I was homeless myself. There was no showers there for them to take shower. They're sleeping on the floor. And they're just like, it's not, it's not a proper way they're taking care of them. Somebody needs to really look into it, you know. Like I said, I was homeless and I'm here to help them. You know, and they're they're not being taken care of right.
She's been told by my understanding, she's told me, because she's been there, they're being told they have to stay there. If they leave, they can't come back. And to do operate a warming shelter, it cannot be open below thir- unless it's below thirty-two degrees. So anything above thirty-two degrees, you can't do a warming shelter. You can't hold people in homeless people or anybody else in a shelter. Twenty-four hours a day unless you have proper showers and everything else.
What they're doing is they're.
And housing.
They're making them do all kinds of stuff around the the premises to be able to stay there. They've been donated food, clothing, blankets, everything from people from the outside, and they're not even getting it, you know. They're they've asked for, I've, because we've went over there and we have someone that's in there. They um they've asked for stuff and they just tell them, no, they can't have it at the time.
You understand that's not a city let, that's not a city-run facility.
It's inside the city limits.
I understand that, but it's a private facility that's doing that.
But there's still laws on warming shelters and shelters and you have to be licensed. My wife is a licensed person for shelters in the state of North Carolina, so I I'm very aware of these laws.
Not not disputing that.
And Ike Perkins is very familiar with me.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, all this will have to take in and pass on to the proper people involved in the county.
Are we gonna try to do something about this and try to work to fix this homeless problem and actually help the people involved instead of. Fight against them and push them out? Because I've been arrested for feeding the homeless.
Yeah, there there's a lot going on right now and we could get into the Western Piedmont Council government has got a homeless response team.
And it seems like, if I'm not mistaken, okay, they got what, four point two million dollars over a five minute, a five-year time? Or a four-year time for five counties, is that correct?
For for four counties.
For four counties, okay. And how many people are working on that? In each county?
Uh, whatever the response team is, and I don't have any exact. Yeah, I mean, you know, they are working on it.
All right, so are they actually working on it or are we using them as a study group and research group?
They are actually doing both of those, I would say the answer to that.
Cause there's plenty of people.
So what's the what's the count up to?
I have no idea. The numbers are turned into federal and state and federal governments.
And that's supposed to be done tonight, is that correct?
It's due this week.
Any way we can get the numbers on that? Because I don't think.
Call Western Piedmont Council Government, yeah.
You haven't had the consortium of care and all that.
Yeah, but I was told by one of them, our numbers don't matter.
Yeah.
Well, we can't debate that tonight, but we'll be take your information and pass it on.
Oh, yeah. When can we debate this?
Well, I mean, like I say, the Western Piedmont Council government is is in doing this and you're welcome to talk with them.
I've talked to them more than once.
Well, then I would consider that you need to continue to do that.
All right, I guess I'll put a petition into.
You guys can't open up a shelter for them?
It's not a it's not a city function to do that. Put up a shelter. We don't run shelters.
But oh, you guys arrest people that are out there that are homeless because they're homeless. I mean, like, some people understand, don't wanna get on their feet. But like for us, we got on our feet and we got us, you know, we're we're doing good. But there's other people that just can't.
Her and him are two of my, what I call success stories. I've been helping them for a couple of years and help them get off the street and into a place.
And we came to California.
How many people can say that?
Became homeless and we we got on our feet. I understand some people don't want them. That's their opinion. But there's other people like us that do, you know, and there's nothing for us out there. Not nothing. The day we got our apartment, the day we were gonna get arrested because the unfortunately, we were at the Walmart and they said we're trespassing, I guess, that's what it is. And I mean, that's not, you know, it's ridiculous.
It seems to me like this has been turned over to Western Piedmont so y'all can get it off y'all shoulders, so it ain't your problem.
What would you have the city do? I'd like to hear you ask that, answer that.
Give me some time and I'll work on that. And I'll bring it back to the next meeting. I got no problem. If y'all gonna work with me and help me solve this problem, I'd.
It's a fair question. If you've got if you've got suggestions, bring them to us. But but right now, all we're hearing is accusations.
They weren't accusations, it was facts.
That's all we're hearing.
Yeah, let's don't let's don't debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come back. I'll be back next month to talk to y'all and I have all solutions. Thank you. One solution is open up another homeless shelter. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the the council? Mr. Whittington and Mr. Harper?
It's a lot of limping going on.
Management of council, if I could just have a few words, as your recreation department head, I support one hundred percent what Lester's bringing to you tonight to vote on.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Phil.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lester.
You know, it's a little rough for me right now.
By the way, I was gonna say that, thank you. We will be keeping you in our thoughts and prayers. I know you have some surgery coming up here. Real soon, Thursday. Well, we'll be thinking about you. I hope everything goes well.
I do too. Hope to be back soon.
You're in our thoughts. Thank you.
Y'all know this year is Harambe, fifty years of Harambe. And I wrote a grant for a mural. And the reason I'm here is to ask the council permission to present that mural on the wall in the gym on the left-hand side. Over there by where the music instruments are. And the mural's gonna be six feet by twelve. And the young man that's gonna paint the mural is Charles Kinzu from Hickory. If you ever been to Hickory downtown, uptown, all the murals on the on the walls, he has done a lot of those murals, did a great job. I tried to do a little sketch, what I'm wanting to do. And that's just some stuff, but. It's a little hard right now to talk about Harambe because we just lost one of the co-founders of Harambe, Mr. Dwight Perkins passed. They called me Saturday morning, said he passed. You know, we lost Miss Green last year, so I lost two good people. And I'm hoping that we can do this mural for them in their honor. I have been speaking with their families and they are so excited about this mural. So that's why I'm here hoping. It really should be fifty-one years, but you know, we was out for a cold year, so this will be our fiftieth year. So I'm hoping the council will let us put that mural on the wall in the gym. On the left-hand side coming to the gymnasio.
So on the left-hand side?
Yes, sir. On the left-hand side coming in.
Okay.
Correct. And I think Lester said a six by twelve. It's actually a ten by twelve, a hundred and twenty square feet.
It's true, yeah.
Thirty twenty, even better. Yeah.
And that's just a rough draft, but the pit, the the names that y'all see there, we're gonna put the actual pictures of like Dr. Gaston Mishaw, who started the Harambe Festival. Dwight Perkins. I was trying to keep a secret from Sam, but he kept coming in my office. Sam's one of them and Miss Green. So I've been getting pictures from the family members so I can give it to the artist so he can draw. And it's gonna have activities of the other events that goes on during Harambe during that week. So it's gonna be a nice mural. And I want to display that the first week in August for Harambe. Get the families up here. And I think it's gonna bring the community more involved and do a lot of good for this year for Harambe.
Yeah.
To see that mural.
That sounds good. Any anything to add to it? That sounds that sounds like a great idea. And and we're excited that it's his fifty years of Harambe. The oldest festival in Caldwell County, by the way, yeah. So we're always excited when that when that week comes and the events that you've put together for it and.
It's gonna be big this year and, you know, try to do something nice and special this year for the festival. I got a couple of churches involved, some other citizens bringing ideas, something different. I want, like I told them, it's their festival. All I'm doing is just hosting it. It's a Caldwell County festival.
So, okay, I guess. The mural, I know it's not exactly what it's gonna be there, but I guess that when that comes, you guys will have a.
Make sure.
Yeah, have a look at all that, make sure, you know, it it agrees with what you what you want kinda thing, so. Council, any question or discussion or anything?
Sounds good. Sounds exciting.
Just for us to keep.
Yeah, you can keep up. Just just give you an idea, picture idea what's gonna similar. I know the writing parts, but I want Harambe on there. What the meaning of the years and it's fifty years, that's mainly, but the pictures is gonna be of the actual people. Dwight and Miss Green and them the pictures for what their names are.
Right.
You want to vote to endorse the concept, then we'll bring the final thing back to you when it gets.
Yeah, that's that'd be a good way to do it. We'll endorse the concept of what you're doing and then when you get the final thing, with everybody's approval, you know.
We're gonna work out the the grant to go through the city, so we'll get all that worked out too.
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to endorse the concept for the Harambe. Fiftyth anniversary Harambe Arts Festival mural to be done at the MLK Center.
Say that bad sort of.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, a motion for Councilmember Rogers that we approve the concept for this and look forward to it and. We've got some fine people that we're honoring there. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Lester.
Good luck, Lester.
Go Tall Hill.
Go Tall Hill, that's right.
I don't know.
Be Quincy.
You better watch out, Lester. Don't be saying that, ladies.
He did it after the boat. Smart man.
All right, thank you for that and thank y'all. Thank you, Philip, for for putting all that, getting that together and you guys presenting that. All right, we'll move on then for, oh, is there any others persons that would like to come before the council to speak? About this petition of citizens or anything. I don't see anybody. It's like everybody else is our family here, so that's good. All right, we'll move on then. We don't have reports of boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to report recommendations. The city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
A few items of information this evening. The ABC Board meet on Thursday, February eighth at two o'clock. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, February eighth, six P M. At Third Floor City Hall. The City County Service Committee will meet on Monday, February twelfth at noon at the Civic Center. The Economic Development Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, February thirteenth, eight fifteen at Civic Center. The Parks Recreation Advisory Committee will meet on Monday, February nineteenth, six P M. At Mulberry Rec. And City Council will have their annual budget retreat on Friday, February twenty-third, eight A M. And that'll be held at the Jay Brohl Hill Civic Center. Tonight, we have one item for your consideration. If you're ready to vote on that, you may not be, but we have on there the resolution to approve the downtown master plan. And what this do will give us guidance as we go forward with development of our downtown area. You've heard a lot of the highlights that could be the whole last meeting, but also tonight from Andrew and. Before you go back and consider, I just wanna thank Kaylin Horn and Matthew Anthony for all the work on that, but also all the folks involved in this plan. As he mentioned, some of the folks at the beginning of his presentation, the committee, the whole was greatly involved, the department heads, the plan steering committee. All the community meetings and all the citizens that came out, downtown merchants, just had a lot of folks involved in development of the plan. And just wanna say thank you for putting time into that to go back and make downtown what you want it to be, to plan for that for the future. So just thank you for that. But if you're ready to vote, we have a resolution there and we can go back and start the implementation.
All right, you heard the recommendation. We have a resolution to adopt, approve the downtown master plan. And of course, that will continue to be worked on as we move forward, but we need to.
And I don't, I was gonna say, I don't know if Kaylin or Matthew have comments at all. You guys lived with it for a year and a half, so.
All right. Any questions from any of the council or any thing? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I think there's things in here that we're all gonna discover as we go on. There's gonna be things in there some of us like about certain things and not about others. But I don't know that there's any one driving issue that would keep us from voting on this tonight. I think it's something that, again, it's gonna be implemented in stages. We've got to find the funding for certain things. I don't see any delay in holding it up. And and I'll make a motion that we approve the master plan. And again, thank everyone that's been involved.
Thank you. You have something, Mr. Presswell? Yeah, how how does this get presented to the public? Do we advertise it that it's available on the website?
Yeah, we've got it out to the public now, so we can go back and share. It's a big document, but we'll be glad to hire folks who can go back and talk to different groups regarding that. So we can, Joshua can spend time putting out press things, different segments of it and components of it as we go forward. It's gonna take ten years. That's the plan, so it may take a little while to get there.
Ten years, a lot of money.
A lot of money, but a lot of time, but.
Okay. And now the now the work begins on that.
No time to, no time to waste.
Time to waste, that's right. And and we're already doing some other with the roofing. Have a bid award for that. We approved the lights at McCook, that's already done and underway, so we got a lot of things already that are already begun for a lot of this project, so. The projects that are done, so.
It just ties a lot of things together.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Purdue to accept the resolution, adopt the resolution of the downtown master plan as presented. No other questions or discussion? I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. And we are underway. We appreciate that. Anything else, Mr. Hildebrand?
That's all I have.
Okay. Report recommendations to the city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Nothing on that, okay. And I'm trying to think, I don't think I have anything to report at this point in time.
Just got the Black History Month.
Black History, thank you. I knew there was something ahead of my brain there somewhere.
It is Black History Month?
It is.
Uh, but there's several programs that are going on. There is a redate for the showing of. Uh, but there's several programs that are going on. Um, there is a redate for the, uh, showing of the color purple because of, uh, the passing of, um, uh, Mr. Dwight. So we have tried to repost that and I'm sure the city will update that. But there's a lot of great events going on and just take a look and, and come out and, and celebrate.
Good. Take advantage of, uh, things that are going on in, in and around the community for Black History Month. Several things at the King Center that will be happening and, uh, look for, look forward to that. Always a, a fun time to, to learn a lot about the history that way. All right. Anything else from any of our council members to have to report? All right. If not, we stand adjourned.